And uh. So hello and welcome to today's Info2Go webinar. My name is Annie Gaines and I am the CE consultant here at the Idaho Commission for Libraries. Today, we have a special session with a special guest. We have Dr. Victoria Kent with us here today to talk about COVID-19. Dr. Kent is in her third and final year of residency at the Family Medicine Residency of Idaho. She has worked up close and personal with COVID in the hospital ICU and the clinic. She is by no means an expert in COVID, but she has learned some important safety measures in reducing transmission and further infection. Dr. Kent, thank you so much for joining us today.
No problem. Thanks for having me. I'm gonna share my screen because I have a little PowerPoint.
Sounds good.
I appreciate you guys coming to hear more about COVID. You probably know quite a bit, but I, as Annie said, I'm a resident physician at the Family Medicine Residency of Idaho and Boise. Work at St. Els and St. Luke's. And then we also have our own clinic system. We have urgent care where we see a lot of COVID patients and then also work in the ICU at St. Els. So seen a lot of it sadly and seeing a lot more of it. And so I'm really thankful that you guys are wanting to learn more about how to reduce transmission in the library system. So that my first slide is just thanking you for having me here because I appreciate that you guys are concerned about this. Because I think that COVID is maybe worse now than it's ever been. And so I appreciate that you guys are wanting to learn more now. So as you are probably aware, I just wanted to give a little bit of background of kind of where we're at with COVID right now. Kind of have been referring to it as like the third or maybe even the fourth wave. Initially, when COVID first came out, it's kind of the first wave. As people distanced, the, you know, cases went down. And then as people started to get together again, cases spiked back up and then vaccination has driven it down. And now with the new variants, we've seen, we've been seeing a lot more of it. And so even just yesterday, there were 1,200 new cases in Idaho. And if you're looking at the data kind of long term, over the last 14 days, our cases have gone up by 19%, which is among the highest nationwide as far as percentage increase in the last two weeks. So we're definitely experiencing a lot more right now in Idaho. There's 230,000, been 230,000 cases of COVID. I'm sure some of that's also underreported and probably even more so today because it's from yesterday. And there have been 2,600 deaths within our state from COVID, also likely underreported. And then yesterday, we just started the crisis standard of care within the whole state of Idaho. So that means in Boise and other hospitals statewide, trying to triage patients. Because our hospitals and ICUs are being so overwhelmed with COVID that we're not able to accept every patient for admission. And therefore also changing standards of care that are offered in the hospital. I can assure you that at the hospital, they're still trying their best to offer the highest level of care and be safe with patients. But it just really speaks to where we're at with things and how severe they've really, how severe they've really gotten. Just looking, you know, can see nationwide, this is a problem. And this was from the nineties. I'm sure it's a lot different now, but you know, in Idaho, Boise specifically, St. Els has a large portion of our ICU beds. And most of those are occupied and they're looking for an expansion of that within our hospital. So we're really at a crisis point here. And so I appreciate you guys wanting to learn more about how we can kind of prevent this. As you're probably aware from just learning about COVID in the last 18 months, you know, mostly transmitted through close range contact, being close to someone through respiratory droplets. So that's through sneezing, talking, coughing, being in close contact with someone. So those respiratory droplets can be transmitted. And then if those droplets are somewhere nearby and touch your hand to those things, those can then get contaminated elsewhere. And then some airborne transmission as well, but the close range contact is really what is highest risk. So as far as like viral shedding and infectiousness, you know, you are really at highest risk before you're even symptomatic, which is why it's such a tricky disease. Because a lot of people aren't aware that they even have COVID and are going about their normal life and infecting other folks who would be vulnerable. It's mostly replicates in your upper respiratory system. So it's kind of your nose and mouth and upper airways. And that's, that replication is highest in the very early, very early stages. After you're exposed to someone with COVID, after seven to 10 days, you're at lower risk for getting infected. And so if you were exposed, you know, your infectiousness risk is decreased after 10 days. Where people are most likely to get COVID is in healthcare settings without proper PP where you're directly exposed to patients who have COVID. In chronic or good setting. So as you guys probably saw, there's a lot of outbreaks in nursing home and assisted living facilities. And traveling. So that's why CDC still recommends wearing masks while traveling. Being in close quarters, in close contact can obviously increase that risk. And then eating and drinking without a mask and vaccine or being vaccinated is high risk as well. For the same reason I talked about earlier, just kind of all that replication on that upper airways and risk of infection there. Sorry. So just a question that you guys may have is what about surfaces? You know, being a facility that checks out library books to folks, COVID can persist on surfaces for, you know, up to a week. But its presence doesn't always indicate transmission. There's been some studies shown that the COVID virus that is still on the surfaces of, still on surfaces is not likely to cause infection. You're more likely to obtain infection through respiratory transmission. So unless someone like just sneezed into a book that they were reading without a mask on and then you open it up right afterwards, the risk is fairly low. On surfaces themselves. Still important to, you know, use hand hygiene and wipe off highly used surfaces such as computers where multiple people are cycling through, but in more inanimate objects, the risk is lower. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Delta variant too, because that is a big reason why we're having this third wave of COVID. The Delta variant itself has caused a lot, a bigger increase in hospitalizations. And there's a few reasons why it's caused an increase in hospitalizations recently. One is in Idaho specifically, and a lot of places nationwide is fueled by the low vaccination rate. So by not having enough of our public vaccinated, the virus is able to spread to other individuals and they're hard cause more infections. And then the virus itself has increased through the Delta variant. It kind of has increased its viral load and replication. And so kind of comparing what someone carries, if they are positive with COVID. Now compared to if they were positive at the beginning of the pandemic, 18 months ago, it's a thousand times more of the virus is what they're carrying. And so and someone who is positive with COVID, they have more virus that they're able to spread to others. And you kind of, this picture, I think, kind of depicts it well with how many more people become infected from the original COVID strain versus the Delta variant. And the Delta variant also has caused more hospitalizations because it produces a more severe illness. This may be due to the higher viral load, causing more of an immune response. COVID is so deadly because as our body responds to the virus, you know, we have our own immune response that our immune system creates. But it creates a really strong inflammatory reaction and that inflammatory reaction can cause things like blood clots and strokes and heart attacks and lung scarring, which can be detrimental. So by having a high viral load, it causes more severe illness as well. And then they've seen that vaccinated individuals who have had the Delta variant can also spread it to others. So you know, with some individuals getting COVID after being vaccinated, the Delta has shown to be somewhat resistant and can still spread to others. And then. So with regards to the Delta variant, you know, there is, it has been somewhat more resistant to the vaccines, but it has been better at reducing hospitalization. So those people who have gotten COVID with the vaccine have been less likely to be hospitalized with COVID, which is a really big deal. And we work in the ER as well, and I'm currently working there and seeing a lot of patients that have come in with COVID. And those who have been hospitalized have almost all exclusively been unvaccinated. So just to talk a little bit about prevention, you know, the number one thing that you guys can do to help prevent transmission is vaccinated yourselves. You know, there's three vaccines that are available currently, currently listed the efficacy for all three of them. There's not a lot of data with how effective they are against the Delta variant. But it's still, like I said, even though people have been getting cases with the Delta variant, they are much less likely to be hospitalized and even much more likely to, you know, much, also much less likely to die from COVID, which is a really big deal. We've had far too many people who have passed away from COVID. You know, the vaccine itself, as someone who's been vaccinated, there's not a lot of side effects. You know, most people have headache, myalgia and fatigue. There's been a lot of news regarding other more severe side effects, such as myocarditis and Guillain-Barre. That's inflammation of your heart and then a nerve disorder that can cause numbness and weakness in your legs and your other nerve fibers in your body. Those reactions are fairly uncommon. If you guys are interested, I looked up the stats on them. They're on my notes. I apologize. I don't do too many COVID, or sorry, not COVID presentations on Zoom. So I'm having a hard time finding my notes here. If you're interested on the stats, I can pull it up in a little bit. But what specifically the Guillain-Barre and myocarditis rates are, but they're very low. And what I've been telling my patients is honestly, I would rather have these side effects and not know what the long-term side effects are from the vaccine than have the side effects from COVID, which seen people in their 30s and 40s die from stroke and heart attack. And I think that's devastating. So other things that you can do, you know, wearing masks in high-risk areas. And so the CDC came out with new guidelines that even vaccinated people should be wearing masks in high-risk areas that have higher rates of COVID, and that includes Idaho currently. So those are areas with decreased vaccination rates and then also kind of depends on local transmission rates. Masks, you know, decrease, you know, they've been shown to decrease community transmission, hospitalization and infection rates within communities that implemented this. And we can kind of see that with how the pattern of the pandemic has gone too. With when people started social distancing, the rates drastically went down. So it's definitely still important to keep in mind with the new wave that we're having now. And then, you know, it's, it's been, as a healthcare worker, has to wear a mask all day and be very vigilant about hand hygiene. It's easy to fall into bad habits with stuff and it's still really important to be very vigilant about hand hygiene. You know, when taking off and putting back on your mask and when, you know, using high-risk or not high-risk, high-touch areas. And then something that I would like you guys to do if you're already vaccinated, which is great, thank you so much, is share with others why you got vaccinated and encourage them to do so. Research has shown that like with, you know, difficult topics, the more we talk about them and encourage others to think about them, the more likely they are to follow through with it. So I do my best as a provider to talk with my patients about vaccinations. But if you feel comfortable talking with other people about why you got vaccinated, why it's important, I'm really encouraging you to do that. And then, you know, as you probably started practicing in your job, staying home if you're sick, get tested if you're symptomatic. And the CDC actually is still recommending if you're exposed to someone who's positive with COVID, getting tested post-exposure. There's a lot of places now that, you know, Walgreens, you can buy rapid COVID tests. There's lots of clinics that are offering COVID tests. And so trying to reduce transmission among others is really important. And then this is just, I thought a nice visual, just to show how effective masks are. Oh, go ahead. Do you have a question? Okay, sorry. At helping out with reducing transmission of COVID. So this was a study that was done at Duke. It's kind of interesting. They used lasers and then also use like cell phones to capture these videos of people who had a mask on, had like a one-layer cloth mask, two layers, and then the fancy surgical mask, like in the hospital, the disposable ones. And how, how much of their respiratory droplets were able to escape after caught? They had like them talking for 10 seconds, coughing, sneezing, and they recorded videos. This is from coughing specifically. And so you can see the individual respiratory droplets, use like a laser beam to highlight them. I think this visual just says, you know, a lot with how effective masks are. If you can see all those droplets spreading out into the air and imagine all of those being COVID virus, it's pretty terrifying being that close to that. So masks are important. They really prevent a lot from getting out, both from you expelling it and then also preventing more so from you spreading the virus rather than contracting it, but still very, very important to wear and protect others. And then I just had a few ideas for how the library can kind of help with prevention. And if you guys have more, happy to talk and answer any questions you have. But you know, just, I think this picture really says a thousand words, like with increased rates in our community, having people wear masks within the library, it's probably not a bad idea, especially since the CDC is recommending that even people who are vaccinated continue to wear masks indoors, I think, requiring masks in libraries, good idea. And so having even, you know, having disposable masks available at the doors for people who forgot them and really encouraging people to wear them. Hand sanitizer available at like checkout stations and your shelves. So if people are browsing books, they can sanitize prior to looking and as they're checking out and interacting with others, they can do that as well. As you guys host events, you know, consider size limitations on number of people who can join. And also maybe consider size limitations on how many people can enter the library so that there's not too many people in one area. You know, considering virtual activities. Annie told me about some neat, like grab and go crap bags. That sounded fun. But things that you can still do to reduce the amount of people that are in person, but you know, have more virtual options. And then if you do have in-person events, maybe consider having only vaccinated individuals come. Or, you know, again, requiring masks. Research has shown that doing things in public, like public vaccination specifically have found, have been very effective. And so, for example, in Alaska, they're vaccinating at the airport. But I don't know, it's an idea you guys could potentially partner with someone to do public vaccinations at the library. That could be a way to help improve vaccination rates within Idaho and then also promote that through the library. And then, you know, another thing considered is vaccination requirements amongst employees. A number of healthcare facilities nationwide in federal areas, they're requiring vaccines now. So it can be something that local libraries could consider as well. I'm sure there are many other things and maybe you guys have ideas too of ways that you could help reduce transmission of COVID throughout the library. Does anyone have any questions about anything? I'm sorry if that was kind of fast. It can be kind of a fast talker, but if anyone has any questions about anything or anything I can clarify, I'm happy to answer anything.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm gonna give folks a minute or two because it always takes longer to type than, than we think. So feel free to type your questions in the chat. I'm still so struck by that image of the, the coughing with different types of masks, especially with what you shared about the Delta variant has like, like a thousand times more of the virus. And so I was just imagining each droplet has like a thousand times more of the virus in it. And so like, that's, it's even more deadly and even more useful to wear a mask.
Absolutely. There's a, I originally found this article through like CNN or something like that. But I found the original medical article and read that, but they have a video of it. And it's, it's cool to see the video because they have someone cough and talk and you can see all the like droplets escaping. Just took a screenshot of the videos, but it's a pretty powerful video to watch too.
Nice. Yeah. So any questions for Dr. Kent while she's here with us?
I'm really glad you guys came and listened. I don't know. I'm curious. Is there anything that you guys are doing currently? You mentioned the, like doing more virtual options and crap bags. But I'm curious what, what you're currently doing in the libraries to kind of help with COVID transmission. And I'm sorry if I just said all the things you're already doing.
Oh, no. Yeah, folks, if, if you want to put in the chat, you know, anything that your library has done in the past year or so to sort of adapt. I know virtual programs are really popular. The Grab and Go Kits, I've seen there's been lots of adapting programs outdoors. That's been a trend as well. A few different libraries are like developing outside spaces where there weren't before, like seating and shading. So that people can access the, the wifi of the building and have a good signal without actually going inside the space. Thanks for that, Meg.
That's a good point. Definitely been someone that's utilized the wifi of a library before. So that's, I say you still have that opportunity.
There's also been a push for using wifi extenders. So just extending the boundaries of the wifi farther out into the parking lot effectively. So that's been something that libraries have been doing the past year as well.
Nice.
Yeah, especially with school, it was, it was a really big push to get enough laptops and enough wifi to all of the students that needed it, who were trying to access their, their classes. And so libraries kind of stepped in and helped fill that need a little bit.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for being here, Dr. Kent.
I'm sorry that wasn't a very long presentation, but I hope it wasn't.
I think that was perfect. I think that was fabulous. Yeah.
If you guys have any questions at all, you can feel free to email me. I'm happy to answer more. Have my email on the first line, but feel free to write that down. I can put it in the chat.
Oh, that'd be perfect.
Thanks, Alex. I appreciate the thanks. It's been a hard couple of months, but I'm happy to be helping others. It's a very interesting time to be in training.
Yeah. Yeah. And we so appreciate you taking the time out of your busy, busy schedule to come and talk with us. I feel like this, this interface between the, the medical profession and the public services folks is really important.
Me too. Yeah. Guys, feel free to email me if you have any questions. It's nice to meet all of you. Let me just make sure that there wasn't another question here. Okay, good. All right. Have a good weekend, guys. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Kent. Thanks so much. So folks are still here. I have some more information for you. So a couple of things. I wanted to talk about the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare is working with a group called Vault Medical to provide COVID-19 saliva-based PCR tests for both organizations and individuals in Idaho. These tests are offered free of charge. And if you want more information or do you want to have these tests available for your library staff or your library patrons, you can contact Shelley Snyder at this email address. I will also put it in the chat. I also have a press release that goes along with the PCR tests, so I will put that in the chat as well. Who Alex says their whole family took these tests. They're great and super easy to use and the results came back within three days. So that's great. That's, that's a glowing review in my opinion. So here's a little bit more information with a press release on that. So additionally, there's something called Communities for Immunity. It is an IMLS-funded initiative that's offering funding for library and museum efforts to support vaccine confidence where it matters most at the local level. So these funding awards are going to be provided to museums and libraries to develop, to leverage their deep community relationships that they already have to improve vaccine confidence in the community. Round one of funding has already ended, but round two starts in early October. So there's still time to get involved. I'm going to put a link in the chat. Oh, Alex, it's good to hear that that was negative. Yeah, Megan, just a second. I'll put that email back in the chat. Oh, I'm not, I'm, I see what I'm doing. Okay, so here's the email for Shelley. And I'm going to put the link for the press release. And a link for Communities for Immunity. So Communities for Immunity is this great IMLS-funded grant program where they're, they're giving out funding to libraries to try to improve vaccine confidence. It's very awesome. On their website, they actually have a section devoted to. Where did it go? I had another link that I was gonna give you. They have a section devoted to resources that develop vaccine confidence. So I'm going to put that in the chat as well. So this is basically a website that lists all these different organizations that have already developed educational information and examples and handouts that talk about vaccines sort of in general. You know, why they're useful, the history of the vaccines, things like that. So they've collected all of these things in one place to make it a little bit easier to find this information and boost vaccine confidence in, in your communities. And then another resource that I wanted to mention is the Realm Project, which has been providing some timely information about the COVID virus and its variants to libraries, archives and museums. They recommend continually reevaluating COVID-19 policies as new scientific discoveries are published. Over the last 18 months or so, the focus has really shifted from surfaces and sanitizing surfaces to providing adequate ventilation and, and vaccines. So you can check out the, the Realm Project at the link I'm going to put in the chat. And they, I'm going to share this screen so that you guys can see what I'm looking at here. So this is the Realm Project research page and you can see this is their most recent update. And so they offer these research briefings where what they're, they're effectively going out and reading all of the latest scientific research and then summarizing it in a way that the average person can understand it and putting it in these research briefings. Because, you know, things are happening so quickly. There's so much new science around COVID. So they, they create these really nice briefings. And each briefing will have this overview page where they give you some highlights, some research questions. So this is interesting. This is talking about a recent study of a workplace in Italy where they found that goodness. That I effectively, I think they found that the workplace needed more ventilation. Because there wasn't enough mitigating efforts to keep people from getting COVID in that space. So these are the different research briefings. They're, they're great. They're listed chronologically. So you can see the most recent one and then you can go back and look at previous ones if you want to. And then in addition to those resources, you've also got some available to you from the state. There is a State of Idaho COVID-19 Communications Toolkit with a bunch of information that is designed to help keep people safe from the COVID virus. So I'm going to put that in the chat as well. They've got social media posts, videos, flyers, posters. Anything you can think of, really, the, the state has provided a wealth of resources. And then we at ICFL, we also have a website full of COVID-19 related resources and information that might be of use to you. So I will put that in the chat as well. This webinar is really just throwing links at you. So I hope, I hope that's useful. So yeah, we, we, it's an ever-growing collection of resources on the vaccines, on health literacy and on state and national information that we update it pretty regularly. One last thing is that the library consultants here at the Idaho Commission for Libraries are here for you. So please reach out if you have any questions or if you need anything. I listed the contact information for myself. Dina Brown, our Emerging Trends Consultant, and William Lamb, our Library Technology Consultant. Um, Dina Brown, our emerging trends consultant, and William Lamb, our library technology consultant. Um, or just three of the mini library consultants available to serve you. So reach out if you need anything. And this concludes the webinar on COVID-19 and the library. Um, thank you so much for coming. I hope that that was good information for y'all. I hope you have a good afternoon and thank you so much for joining us.